Good evening, I'm going to call us to orders this 20th of August 2021. We are in the form of education. Welcome to the beginning of the presentations.
Presenting the United States of America, the Republican Party, which stands for the Constitution of America, indivisible, liberating and unencumbered.
Before we begin, I'll ask everyone to remember to silence your phones and also make sure that you are wearing the masks. We begin with comments from the public on agenda items only. So if you are here from the public to speak tonight about something specifically that's on the agenda, you're welcome to the podium. There's a sign machine and you'll be able to speak. We have a three-minute timer and a thirty-minute laptop. A while later, if you have comments that are not specific to agenda items, to talk as well.
Yeah, that's listed up. You want to add some more?
Student report? No, student. Student, you know what? Yeah, I'm gonna do that. I appreciate that. Steve points out that we have the students' reports, but our student may have responsibilities tonight that may make it preferable to swap that. So if there's no objection from the board, I'm gonna go ahead and have the student get us here to go first before we start the comments.
Thank you. Good evening and congratulations to the newly elected four members this year. For those who don't know me, my name is Marie Capasso and I'm the senior student representative and I'll be coming to talk on behalf of the student body. We are in the process of electing a junior representative that will be joining me to help represent the students as well. Everyone is so happy to be back in school for the full five-day week that we haven't had in a year or half now. Fall sports have begun and are on full swing, practicing daily and further things. Teams are off to a great start and we can't be more excited to allow fans back in the stands. Clubs have also started and are in person, giving everyone a sense of normalcy. Getting off this weekend is the eighty-eighth Film Continuum. This is where student filmmakers from around the district come together to compete to make the best movie over Columbus Day weekend. I encourage you to get a group together and make a short film to be a part of this awesome experience. The Human Rights Club has also started to organize an upcoming festival, including all clubs throughout the high school. Each club that signs up will be able to customize their booth with an activity to fit their club's purpose. All the money raised from this event will go to a charity of choice by the club who raises the most money. Eastchester seniors have started meeting with their guidance counselors as college application deadlines are approaching. Counselors are helping students work on and finalize their applications and college essays. Standardized testing is back to normal and as the senior students start to wrap up their testing before college deadlines, the juniors are beginning to take them for next year. Great news as the college representatives from many different schools will be coming to EHS over the next couple of months to talk about their respective college. This provides students with an opportunity to learn directly through college representatives and the activities that they offer. These college visits start tomorrow with Loyola University during first period and the University of Connecticut on Thursday also during first period. The fall season Eastchester Blood Drive will be held this year on October fourteenth from two thirty to seven P.M. EGO is asking anyone over the age of sixteen to donate. To sign up, a link can be found on the high school's website. A link is also posted in any EGO Instagram where the QR code is located on posters that are hung up throughout the school. Freshmen will begin to run, soon to be a part of EGO and have a position as an officer to help represent the freshman class and help alongside the upperclassmen who gained this position at the end of last year. All officers are beginning to discuss plans for the upcoming school year as well. Another topic to celebrate is that the Student Athletic Council has started to plan out the cover rally, which all Eastchester students missed out on last year. Potentially being an outside event, student athletes and all Eagle Nation will be able to come together and get excited for the homecoming games to follow the next day. The Athletic Council are also in the works of finalizing the design for homecoming shirts and for more Eastchester apparel, the online store has opened for students, parents, faculty and alumni to purchase and enjoy. Powder Club, which is also an Eastchester tradition amongst girls throughout all grades, is coming back this year. Teams created by the girls will be going head-to-head playing quick games of flag football that are coached by the students on the varsity volleyball team. Most of the money raised from this event will be going to breast cancer research and we are excited to have it back again. With all that being said, this year is off to a great start and feel free to ask me any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I welcome you to sneak out whenever you've got to get back to me. Alright, so we'll go back to if there's anybody in the public that wants to speak specifically about agenda items or if it's non-agenda items, I'll ask you to save that for later. And I'll ask you to start by announcing your name and address and if you'd like to share with us who you have this one.
Hi, good evening. My name is Isabella Stroron and I would like to talk about the COVID guidelines that are on the agenda. So good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to thank everybody to have, you know, finally this year, five days of school and for doing everything you can to keep the students and our staff safe. The reason why I'm here tonight is to discuss the table seating arrangement at Anhutch and Son School while COVID. Over the summer, Dr. Glass presented pictures of seating where students would be three feet apart and table to a table facing forward. Well, this is not the case anymore at Anhutch. At Anhutch, desks are attached, kids are elbow to elbow, and in my daughter's third grade class, there are eight tables attached. In my son, in fifth grade, there are four tables attached. And I have pictures here if anybody wants to come and see it. This is the third grade at Anhutch. This is the fifth grade at Anhutch. So last week, there was a cold outbreak in my daughter's class, all within the attached tables arrangement. Four kids had been out with the cold, my daughter had to stay home to get better and get COVID tested, so did the other children. This was a simple cold. Imagine if it were COVID. Why is the school now interpreting three feet apart from the center of the kid's seat to the center of the other kid's seat? This is very different from what the summer outline was. We all know kids move, this seat arrangement is not okay. They're also facing each other, they have snack at the table without washing hands. Yes, hands are now washed before and after snack and lunch. In my daughter's class, water bottles and lunch boxes are on the floor, creating fully hazard, but most importantly, not a sanitary way to keep food and water throughout the day. The blanket where they eat are kept on the floor next to each other and they're not brought home for regular laundry. Their basic sanitary hygiene concerns I would have pre-COVID, man also during COVID. When I asked for the seat to be rearranged, I did not get a positive outcome. I was told the school was following the district guidelines. One of my children's teachers suggested for my child to be seated alone away from others. Do you consider this socially, emotionally, psychologically okay to have a student singled out? And how about the health of the entire class? Also, please note that in one of my child's class, the window screens are missing, so some of the windows are closed. And it was hot during open house, while in my son's class, it was very windy and cold. So I'm not sure how you guys can try to control temperature, opening the window or not and also buy screens, which are not very expensive. We all want the same, kids to learn, be healthy, safeguard everyone's health and keep school open. So please make sure to adopt measures that will allow so. I would greatly appreciate you looking into this on top of COVID where there is Delta rampant amongst kids. There will be another layer with flu season coming up along with cold weather. And one good note is that this afternoon, I had the pleasure to speak with Dr. Collins, who's the medical director, who shared with me that she and Dr. Ursor noticed the same table setting issue are wavering. So they will be working together in solving this issue. So I would immensely appreciate if you could do so to please give us a timeline so we can all work together to ensure a safe, consistent education with less as possible interruption for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Any other consideration? Anyone else about agenda items for tonight? Okay, I think we'll go ahead and move on. Or command reports. I actually got them, but I'll save it for last. Cheryl?
Sasan? Yeah. I just wanted to make a couple announcements on behalf of SEPTA as I'm the liaison to SEPTA this year. So SEPTA presented at the PTA Council meeting, the first PTA Council meeting of the year, which was on Monday. And they have a couple upcoming events, so mark your calendars. The first SEPTA meeting is on Thursday, October fourteenth at seven P.M. This is always an important event and a really great meeting because they have several staff members from across the district there talking about ways that they work with students in their classes, engage students and giving grade tips for parents for working, engaging students at home and collaborating with the classroom teachers. So it's a really great insight into some of the teaching practices in special ed, but really applicable across the district that are going on in all five of our buildings. So Thursday, September, October fourteenth at seven P.M., it's going to be a Zoom meeting. And SEPTA fundraiser is back at Mickey Spillane's and it's always a really fun night, that's Friday, November fifth. It runs for several hours. Mickey Spillane's is a partner with SEPTA. They give back part of the tab for the night. They have guest bartenders and it's a, they have raffles and it's a great night. So mark your calendars for that, Friday, November fifth at Mickey Spillane's.
Thank you, Cheryl. Anyone else? Chris, do you want to talk about finance that was just tonight?
Hello, Sasan, yes. Thank you, Judah, for putting on the sign here. My first finance meeting of the year. It was actually very eye-opening. It was great, it was positive. The team here really put together a very quality report. We went through many items and it's nice to hear that actually, I think the comment was made, Judah asked a question, you know, where do we stand? Where do we kind of compare against other districts that are similar in size to us vocally? And we're at the top of the list, funny enough, for being very fiscally sound and, you know, using our monies the right way. And I think it was all, it was all great news. So I was really pleasantly surprised coming out of the meeting.
Thank you. And the facilities also had a meeting this week, or last week. And some of you may remember a while back, we had our presentation from here on all the items that need to be dealt with from maintenance standpoint in the various buildings and facilities. It was a big number and I think we're planning to look at between the safety and security bond that we thought about a couple years ago and our postponed because of COVID and then the other maintenance items we have to start looking at. We're starting to look at the possibility of a bond proposal that will be forthcoming. So you'll see more about that very, very soon. It's gonna be a multi-year, I think it's gonna be a multi-year endeavor. It's not gonna be just one bond and done. So it'll be interesting, the strategy we're gonna take to try and get these buildings up to par, both from a safety and security standpoint as well as from a maintenance and operations, or operations, facilities operations. So that's, that's worth doing. Any other? Go ahead, Cheryl.
There was a middle school, high school joint PTA meeting. Unfortunately, I had to miss it because I had a work obligation, but I just wanted to put that out there. Maybe if anybody was here, I know that the PTAs are jumping right in and getting really active. I know that the middle school PTA is doing very well with membership, but get your memberships in.
Thanks, Cheryl. Alright, with that, we'll move on to our superintendent.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Glad to see everybody here. It's good to have a good start to the school year with all of our students and partners here tonight and in our schools every day. I just want to highlight a couple things for you on this slides. Our theme for this year, of course, is Back to the Future. And we talked a little bit about this before. I want to start with just something really heartwarming that occurred just today, just this afternoon, about one o'clock. The audio works. This is a mobile exhibit that is getting sponsored by a local foundation along with Eastchester Roader Club that is now, you're seeing it proceed over Lake Isle where it will be for the next several days, where our students will be going to a mobile nine-eleven museum that will really take them through all of the events and help them have a deeper historical understanding of what occurred and appreciation for all the sacrifices that were made. And so we appreciate so much our community partners for bringing this together. Susan Chester in our social studies and English language arts department who coordinated with these entities to bring this exhibit here so our students can, middle school or high school can experience this opportunity and it's a real point of community pride. I just want to remind everybody that we have four big goals this year. The first one is to work on our strategic plan. I'll talk about that in a moment. The second one is to reinforce and bolster our existing systems to help them serve our students a little bit better than they already do. The third, as you heard a little bit about a moment ago, is to work on our facilities to support health and learning. And fourth, to create a culture of belonging in the district. And I want to let everybody know that we have a goal and a work plan for the year built out and that is on our website. I'm gonna show it to you pretty flat, just so you know it's there. It has timelines and deliverables. If you go to our website, under academics, and there at the bottom, I'm sorry, that's coming later, under the district superintendent page, you will see the goals for the year right here. And they are smart goals, meaning they're specific, measurable, achievable, realistic and timely. And these are the things we're working on. And these are the four goal areas and all the sub-activities that are going to be taking place to accomplish those goals or take them as far as we can in this current year. And I'll be reporting on our progress throughout the year on each of these areas. So I'm gonna ask that you familiarize yourself with them if you're someone fine, you have a good sense of the things that we're working on throughout the year. In general, this plan addresses student instructional and emotional needs. We had elements in there that were looking after coming into this post-COVID time, how are our students doing academically, emotionally? We have new tools we're bringing onboard and training people in to be able to better handle on that from a national perspective so we can see how our students are doing as individuals and help give our teachers actionable data that they can act on in the classroom or that we can provide special services for students if they need more than what can be delivered in the classroom. So those support systems are also being worked out to be strengthened and sharpened. And then we'll have various reporting structures in addition. We have a lot of the reporting structures already built into our current system of grading, of recording, and our teachers are always accessible. And we also will find additional ways to talk more about what we see in aggregate right now, early on in the year. It's a little bit early to know exactly where our students stand and how our system is responding in specifics, but as we get several weeks in, we'll know more. In the strategic planning area, we're working on the vision of a graduate. Now, these are drafts that come out of the strategic plan work. Currently, we have a vision or a mission statement for the district that we've had for a long time. I think the committee feels pretty good with that as it stands. We also have a profile on graduate. We call it a graduation goals is what we call it here in Eastchester. Very similarly, we want to be able to say, well, a student leaves here based on what we know that they're gonna be encountering ten, twelve years from the time they start with us and they get into college or their post-high school experience and then on into life. We've been studying what they're gonna need and these are the things that have risen to the top. The five things on the left are really a set of skills and things on the right are really mindsets or dispositions that our students are going to have to have. And as you look at these, I think you will see they line up pretty well with what you can imagine. I heard a statistic yesterday that within the next couple of years, it's estimated that thirty-five percent of individuals will be working from home. Not too different than what we think we may be seeing now. It may not ever go back or it may not go back right away. And that's just one small example of how you have to have students who have the ability to be, I think number four, collaborative self-managers, be able to do that from their home, right? And to be able to have the empathy and integrity to manage that remote work schedule. I want to talk for a minute about the sense of belonging piece. And I want to let everybody know, you know, there's a lot of talk and a lot of discussion around diversity, equity and inclusion, not just here, but around the country. And, you know, so what's important for you to know is the approach that we are taking here is not just to explore the state document that they asked us to look at and kind of unpack that and make sure we understand it for ourselves, but our goal is also, the prime directive around all this is to bring us together, not to find the things, certainly to respect the differences, but to find and measure on initiatives that unify us and bring more people closer together. And I can tell you right now that I know all the ways that we're going to do that, but I can tell you that that is the spirit that we have. And so that is the prime directive for the group. And so for those who may be wondering what's happening with this, if you go to our website and go to academics at the bottom of that channel, you will see a link for diversity, equity and inclusion. And when you get there on the left, there's some additional dropdowns on the left. So we have an overview here, we have FAQs as well. When, you know, when and why did the district decide to engage in this? What is the task force? Who's on it? We've got a list of the members there. What is the charge? What is the work? What is the work not? What are the norms? How were these selected? Who's facilitating the work? Is it costing us any additional money? Those are in the FAQs. You have a list of the meetings and the slides from the meetings, some of the activities we did in the meetings. You have some of the resources that we're working with. This is the prime document, the New York Department of Education website on cultural response to sustaining education. Talks about what it is and what are the four big principles of it. So there's a lot here to start with and I want everybody to know that the task force was intentionally designed for six meetings and then to make some recommendations to this board about where to go next. The task force may or may not continue in its form after that. The task force will say, we think you should consider doing several things. And then it will be for this board to talk about it, this administration to look at it and make some recommendations as to what to do. It could involve some very small steps, it could involve some more ambitious steps and it could involve more groups and more involvement. So to the extent that some people might be worried about, well, you know, is this a representative group? I mean, I think you could poke holes all day long in any group I would put together and say, it's not representative. I won't that, but I will say also that, you know, the best way to work around that is to get the best thinking that you have with a smaller group of people. And if they say or we hear that we need more voices, let's get more voices, let's find more happening, let's do more. If people say, we want to limit this and we want, you know, go in a very targeted direction, that's okay too. There's no predetermined outcome here. We're just looking at the document and we want to see what the community in general wants to do. And I think that's fair and that's what we're attempting to do. So as we settle into the school year, we're pretty excited about a number of things. I'm just picking some highlights. We're fortunate to have had our elementary conferences live in person. I think we may be giving a school district in this area, we still have that. I want to appreciate our staff, our teachers, custodians, our administrators, our families who all work together to be able to do that. And it was very heartwarming to see so many family, parents and guardians in the schools meeting with teachers and learning, seeing the classroom, experiencing it for a moment. It's been a long time and that was important. And I appreciate those in the community who really said, and those on the board who said, we need to try to make this happen, let's see if we can do this, see. I'm very proud that we did. We heard a little bit in our last board meeting and we have been working on many issues around safety, security and our fields. Very pleased that we have a new program going in our district in terms of redoubling some of the efforts around safety and security. We have a number of new guards, we have a number, we have a new security coordinator who's doing a great job. We have great staff, really engaged, and I made it my mission to really be engaged in equality control around how entry procedures are going for visitors, visitor management and all of those things. It's going very well and there's a lot of consistency. Our emergency plans for each school were submitted today ahead of the deadline. Our emergency plan for the district was submitted in the summer ahead of the deadline. Things are looking very, very shaping up nicely in this area, but it's a never-ending quest to get better and more secure. Part of what needs to occur will be discussed in the work that was discussed around the facilities. To take some next steps, we're gonna need some investment. I'm also pleased about the work that's going on with the scheduling. I just want to shout out to the community about our fields. You may remember taking an email from me in the summer asking for your help and saying we're gonna have to restrict public access to this turf field behind me. It was very unpleasant to have to do that, but we had a number of issues with vandalism and inappropriate behavior and a lot of students out there over the summer. And it's something that comes and goes and has been an issue for a long time. And there are different ways to solve it, most of them involve a lot of money. We tried to avoid those, we tried to focus on the things that you could do by adjusting your systems. And I put this on the website and I just want to say I'm really appreciative of how the community has come together and despite some restriction to the amount of hours that the track and field are available to the community, the situation has fastly improved. So hopefully we can maintain this and hopefully we can continue to preserve this asset without spending a lot of money on safety and security personnel. We heard in the public comment tonight, some concerns around facility spacing. Yes, we've been fielding those. Our buildings are now in a position, size-wise, to be able to get the kind of distancing we want. And so we're gonna continue to work on that and continue to work on that. You've noticed tents, you've noticed different procedures and protocols, we will continue to work on that. And it varies depending on the school and sometimes depending on the individual classrooms within a school. If you can't get three feet by spacing everyone out, you have to ask a question, if I'm still gonna have more teams with a prime director from this board to try to have school as normal as safely possible, then you have to ask the question, can I, you know, when I put kids in rows, if I can't get three feet by doing that? And what's the effect on the education? And it's balancing it. And it's not always perfect, it's not always easy to make the right decision or a decision that everyone can agree on, but that's what we're attempting to do. We continue to work that out. We're also looking at what happens at lunch when you need six feet without the mask in order to avoid a quarantine. And we've had a couple situations. And we've had a couple of situations where when the weather was poor or when we were short some personnel because of standard shortages that all districts are facing right now. We had to put students in a more confined area and we had a number of quarantines. We weren't happy about that. We continue to look for solutions. Today was one of those days where we prayed it wouldn't rain because then we could use the tents to eat at one of our schools, two of our schools, three of our schools. And it started lightning and thunder. We were going to send students out in rain anyway. You know, just to the tent, a little light rain, that gets you more space. But we couldn't do that today because thunder and lightning, so that couldn't happen. And we'll continue to use every square inch aside. Sometimes there's space inside that you can use. But it requires supervisor personnel, maybe like ten additional monitors at a school in order to put half the students in the classroom and half somewhere else. And that's a lot of people that you're taking out full time. And as you can find, so what we're going to do is start working with our teachers and our other support staff and our parents at the school sites, bring everybody in to surface anything we may have missed. So that if we can get more good ideas into play, we will do that because we know the colder weather's coming and we're going to need to find ways to get more space despite the weather. We had some quarantines and I want to show you the dashboard that's on the website. It's right here on the front page. This is right at the bottom of the front page. If you follow this link, it's our dashboard. And on the dashboard, you'll see every day the number of positive cases and quarantines. Now, these are staff and students combined. They're not just students. They're not just staff. We combine them for privacy purposes. And if you look at it, if you look, if you go generally back about ten days from where we are today, that's probably the number of students, the maximum number of students who might be quarantined at any one time. That's generally the maximum number is ten calendar days. So today being twenty-eighth, today's date is not in there or we didn't have the cases today, one or the other. But if you went back to like the seventeenth or the twentieth, somewhere in there up, now that's going to be the number of cases and quarantines. Now, we have a big number here. And that is one of the situations that happened at a lunchtime quarantine. With a couple of students in one situation. I don't expect we'll have many of this size. You can see we generally don't. But that's how you can know what, how many cases we have at any time. We have seventeen have had totals since the start of the school year, the last three weeks, seventeen COVID positive cases, forty-two quarantines. Not all of them, certainly all these, we're not seeing a spread in the schools. We're seeing that these cases are coming to us. But nonetheless, we want to ensure that there's no spread. And we've talked a little bit about instruction for COVID and quarantine students. And the plan that is now on our website is that elementary students, K six, K five, are having a dedicated teacher who will give them personalized instruction for an hour or two a day to keep them current on their curriculum while they're quarantined. What that does is it keeps the classroom instruction for the twenty-some students that were in, in school with the most normals possible instruction. It keeps the teacher from having to divide attention between twenty-some students in front of them and one or two at home. And allows a student to have a personal connection to the curriculum and very efficiently stay abreast for the five to seven school days that they may be out. At the secondary level, passive streaming is what we will be using because you have so many more subject areas and so many more levels within each subject area. But sometimes you can't get a teacher to be able to cover a certain class as a tutor. So in order to accomplish that, students will be live streaming passively into their classrooms whenever they're quarantined. And that has been done this week. Up next, we're going to be doing surveillance testing. Some people call it gateway testing. This is going to be done through Mount Sinai Hospital. And on the agenda tonight is an MOA between us and Mount Sinai Hospital that will allow us to have them conduct the testing for us. Get a saliva test. If there's no nose spot, the student gets a barcoded test to take home. Spits into the tube and brings it back the next day, collected, sent to the lab. And that'll help us know if there are cases out there of which we're not available. That is voluntary opt-in for any family, and I encourage all of our families to really consider this because it is one very powerful tool in helping us stay healthy here in school. The American Rescue Plan for us, we've extended it to October thirtieth. We put a number of things in play in our regular budget in the spring by adding elementary counselors, E M L teacher, social worker, an A I S teacher, and others. Other steps like that were put in place with our regular funds. And so we have five hundred thousand dollars plus in this our plan that is available to spend. And it can be used on a number of specific things. I'm going to thank our P T A council and P T A unit presidents for engaging us in a discussion about how to use those funds. We've taken that input. We keep working with it. And there's no rush to spend this money. We have two or three years to spend it. And right now, I think we are in a position where we don't want to spend it on things that may shift or change. We want to maintain a little fluidity. So we're going to take another month and keep studying that. And I anticipate at our next board meeting in a couple of weeks, we can have a pretty good discussion about where we think that's shaping up so that we can have the plan submitted October thirtieth. Mr. Nguyen is going to be doing a presentation tonight. He is unable to be here tonight. So because of that, we will postpone that presentation till later, but he has a lot to talk about with regard to the great curriculum and instruction work that's going on. This is the second phase of the strategic goal work that I'm talking about, bolstering the existing systems and structures. We are working hard on the facilities recommendation that you'll be hearing about very soon. And you can expect progress updates and dialogue from myself and our team on a regular basis throughout the year about additional opportunities that we're going to have. And so the last item in the update today, and I'm going to just lay this out there and then kind of step away and step into some dialogue. Does that, a question was raised at our last board meeting. It was really good dialogue among board members. About what do you do when a student is, currently our current practice, is when a student has COVID symptoms, how do they go home? And then they have a sibling at home. But the student who was sent home has COVID, has COVID symptoms that hasn't been, doesn't have test results yet. You have a choice with the sibling, whether you can cause them to stay home or whether you let them come to school until there's a test result and you know whether the sibling has COVID. And so Dr. Ursula and her team of nurses did a lot of data collection and also talked to the Department of Health about what the regulation is. Talked to our medical director, Dr. Rebecca Collins, about her thoughts on the matter. And then collected some data which has been shared with the board. I'm just going to share with you the data. And then I'm going to ask Dr. Collins and Dr. Ursula to talk a little bit more about the positions. And then, and then we can engage in some additional discussion. So what you see here in this row is the number of students absent or sent home with COVID symptoms by school, by each week of school. The number of those students who tested positive. Of those symptomatic, how many had siblings in other buildings? And then the number of siblings that became positive. Now, it's only three weeks of data. One could argue that, you know, that's not very large too, no, but it is three weeks worth. And those cumulative numbers, district totals, one hundred and thirty-four sent home, thirteen positive, of those symptomatic, forty-seven had siblings in other buildings, and how many siblings became positive too. So that did something worth talking about. And at this point, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Ursula, kind of round it out for us after this. Your discussions with these other two entities and, you know, kind of just give us the whole sets if you would.
Sure. So as Dr. Glass asked me to, you know, look into this practice and what I did was just a little bit of history. Since we started in-person instruction, the district has excluded students from school if a family member is symptomatic and being tested for COVID nineteen until those results are returned. This was primarily based on recommendations from our medical director, who reviewed, you know, multiple and different guidelines, you know, from C D C to other professional organizations. I then sought to get clarification from New York State or Westchester County Department of Health. And to date, I haven't been able to find any specific guidelines or documentation that could be located to really support the practice. In an attempt to gain more information from Westchester County Department of Health, I did send an email to Dr. Wong, who's the deputy commissioner of disease control, and asked her if she had any regulations or guidance with respect to this issue. Her response, her response to me was that there are no guidelines that Westchester County Department of Health is aware of that addresses the exclusion of asymptomatic siblings of a student with COVID compatible symptoms. While COVID test results are pending, Westchester County Department of Health will only issue quarantine orders to such unvaccinated siblings upon receipt of a positive COVID result. So she did add at the end that being said, schools may implement policies to exclude such individuals. So that was the position of the Department of Health. I asked Dr. Collins to put together some information, some pros and cons of our current practice. Some of the pros that she communicated, and she's in our audience today. Hi, Dr. Collins. Some pros of changing the current practice would be there's less stress on parents, more kids in school. Parents can focus on the sick child at home instead of having everybody home. We would only exclude students and staff who have confirmed cases of COVID and avoid unnecessary days of in-person instruction lost for asymptomatic family members. We would account for not all illnesses being COVID because as someone mentioned today, there's lots of other illnesses going around. This would value the health of the in-person school days of the individual more than the community. So she's talking about that this, this would be more of the, looking at the individual as opposed to the community as a whole. And that Westchester Department of Health does not mandate exclusion. Instead, it does leave it up to the individual districts. Cons, some of the cons may minimize other students and staff need to quarantine if the symptomatic student and staff does have COVID. Takes into account the much more contagious Delta variant, which is ninety-five percent of the cases in our area right now. Values the health of in-person school days of this community more than the individual and provides incentive for vaccinating those who are eligible twelve years and up. And that are some of our nurses and obviously our medical director does support this. In addition to this, I did survey a few local districts to see what their practice was in the area. Just a total of nine responded. Four districts do exclude siblings when a family member is symptomatic and being tested, and five districts do not. So, and then I put together this information for the board to review. And if anyone has any questions, let me know.
That, you know, really would conclude, you know, the report and allow us to move into some discussion.
I had a quick question on the table here. There's a few columns where the second row is actually a higher number than the first. So for example, Greenville, week one, we say zero students were absent or sent home with COVID and of those, two tested positive. So what exactly do these numbers represent if you have this, you know, situation where you say zero students were sent home and of those, zero, there were two that tested positive?
I'd have to look into that. I'm just trying to think. I mean, there's, there's a lot of things with data that can, you know, I'd have to, you know, take a look at. I know Dr. Collins is raising her hand. I don't know if you know the answer to that, but
Yeah, I do.
Sometimes students are not, you know, they're reported, you know, COVID at home as well, so they're not always in school. But I did change that to number of students absent or sent home with symptoms. So I would have to get back to some of that unless Dr. Collins, you wanted to.
Yeah, that was, the parents called in and said the kids were sick.
Yeah.
They're hoping that for a test. So they weren't actively, they didn't actively report to school. But if you said you accounted for that, that's, that was where some of the confusion. Or they're already, they were already, some of them didn't even start the school year because they were already positive and unaccounted.
Yeah, that was the first week. That's right. That was the first week. So there were a couple of kids that maybe like prior to the start of the school and the kids were kept home the first day.
Yeah, and that's accounted for in the label of the first row. It's the number of students absent or sent home with COVID symptoms. Zero. And then number of those students who tested positive, two. And this isn't the only column where we see those discrepancies.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a deep sheet that, you know, was put together and is going to have to be looked at a little bit more carefully. Might certainly take a look at that and revise it, you know, after whatever questions you have.
Is it, is it supposed to be that this second row is only of those students that were tested? I mean, that's the idea. And then is it the idea that the number of siblings, is that at all related to, I mean, does that include, for example, you know, two siblings are at home, they both test positive, they don't consent to school?
So if a student is absent, you know, and they have a COVID symptom, the number is in the first, the first box. And then the number of those students who tested positive, so of those who were sent home or were called an absent, how many tested positive? And of those symptomatic, the first box, how many siblings were there in other buildings? So because I was trying to get at the question of how many kids were being excluded from school. So those would be, that would be the number of kids that would be excluded from school. And then the number of siblings that became positive would be the last box of the, of the kids that were excluded from school.
So this, this wouldn't include a situation where a brother and sister were just kept home in the first place? And both of them had COVID? What I'm trying to get at is whether or not these two cases of the sibling would have been prevented or, or, or prevented by our policy, you know, them being in school?
Well, there was one, there was, the number of siblings that became positive, there was only two. If you look at Anne Hutch, no students tested positive, but one student, one sibling tested positive. That was a sibling of a student in another building who tested positive.
So that's a situation where a student was sent home, let's say with a rainy nose, they were negative. You sent the sibling home and then the sibling was positive?
No, the sibling in another building was sent home or was called an absent because they had symptoms. They ended up testing positive. And then a student and a sibling in Anne Hutch was kept home because of our policy and tested positive. So that was
But our policy doesn't require the sibling to test, right?
Well, a lot of parents tested, the sibling. We happen to know that. But you're correct, not everybody tests. And that's, you know, the problem with data because, like you said, not not every sibling is going to get tested, so we may not even have that information. Most of the parents do test the children, though. But only two of the students did test, the siblings did test positive.
If the first student was negative, and this was just kind of a, like a random occurrence that they happened to test because the other student was sent home who was negative, and it just happened to be that other sibling was positive?
I thought, I thought you said this...
The first sibling was negative?
No, she said the sibling, first sibling was positive, and so, but in a different building?
Yeah, of the two, of the two siblings that became positive, one was at Greenville and had, and was a sibling of, of a student that was sent home and was positive. And one was a sibling of a student in another building who tested positive. So they both tested positive. It was just the two students so far.
Can I just ask, there's been some confusion at Waverly that I know of the past few weeks about the COVID protocols? And I just wanted to clarify them, because I know we discussed this at the August 31th Board of Ed meeting. And I know it's on the district website, and it's in the back-to-school plan. So I just want to clarify, if a student stays home for a day because, say, they have a runny nose, in order to return to school, they need a negative COVID test or a doctor's note saying that they're free to go to school. Is that correct? So that...
That was the guideline, that changed. And I know Dr. Glass was going to be putting that up on the website.
It's up there.
And as revised. So it changed from that, which originally was just a note that said you had to be cleared, that it went back to the previous guideline from last year, where you had to have a COVID test or a pre-existing medical condition or an alternate diagnosis that's specific that ruled out COVID. So it's no longer just a note that says you're cleared.
When did that change?
That changed at the beginning of September. So that August 31st document was inaccurate. And I remember speaking at the board meeting, thinking that that would be easier for parents.
Right.
And that, that then changed, I believe, two weeks later.
Okay. Okay. Just one more question. So if a child comes to school with their negative COVID test, they don't have to be symptom-free, correct? Like they have to not have, obviously, very bad symptoms, they should stay home. But say they have a runny nose, and maybe the nose is still a little bit stuffy, they don't have to be symptom-free, correct?
I believe the wording is a reduction, a reduction in symptoms, or the symptoms are resolving, something like that, but not necessarily completely symptom-free. Fever-free, but not necessarily completely symptom-free.
Okay. I think there's been some confusion at Waverly where parents are being told we need to be symptom-free, so I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Do we have information about how many days the siblings who were sent home missed? Like, you know, it's 47 students, so if each one of them missed one day, it'd be, you know, 47. But if each one of them missed two, it'd be higher, or, you know, some combination?
Yeah, it's typically one or two days at the max. There was a student that is aware of that, that they did not get, that the COVID results didn't come back, and it was a little bit longer. So there are, there are those situations that do happen, unfortunately.
Any other questions?
I guess it's more of a question for the admin, you know, what, what would you guys need in order to change the policy on the siblings? Is this something we would vote on? Is this something we would talk about more? And this is the third meeting now, we've raised the issue. Is there anybody here that still thinks we should keep the policy? I asked everybody last time, they said they wanted to see more data. Do they have the data now? Does anybody still support this policy? You know, a minority of the, of the districts around us have this policy. This policy is not recommended or mandated by Westchester County Department of Health or the state. I couldn't find any guidance online that's recommending this policy. Can we end it? Is there anybody that thinks we should keep it?
I think you pointed out that there's some questions about the data. I would think that before we would use this data to make a determination, we should get clarity on those questions you had on the data.
Would it change your mind?
Potentially, depends on the shows. I mean, one, one thing we have to consider, the reason I asked for the days, is because we see 47 kids miss some school. But the question is, those two kids, if they had been in school, how many children would have to quarantine because of that? And for how many days, right? So that's a 10-day quarantine per child. So it's, I don't necessarily think that this is as cut and dry as, as it might look just looking at the number of 47 and two. Because, you know, we, we saw just a few minutes ago up on the screen, we had a quarantine of 11 kids, right? That, that's 11 kids for 10 days.
That was 11 kids.
For 10 days.
Resulting from two positive cases, and that was an anomaly. I would say usually, if you have a positive case, there's not going to be more than, you know, most of the schools are able to have much better distancing in the lunchroom than Greenville. And I think we're proving that, so I would imagine fewer than six going forward are going to be quarantined from any one given case. Let's call it three. So we have two students, times three quarantined, so that's six, 10 days. Six days, I mean, it's pretty close, I don't know.
It's pretty close for a short period of time. With data that you yourself were questioning as to, is there something wrong with the data? Do we need clarity on this data? I would think that we should, we should have clarity on the data before we rush to change a policy, which we don't at this point know whether it would positively or negatively impact the number of days that students are in school.
I mean, we're not going to ever get perfect data here. Do you want to keep waiting and keep going? This is the third meeting now, it's been a month, it's over a month and a half now. This is what happened last year.
Our students haven't been in school for a month and a half.
I mean, in terms of the meetings, we've had three meetings now. So one of the meetings was before we started.
And how, how many weeks of data is this? Three weeks?
It's two weeks.
Two weeks.
And two days.
Two weeks and two days.
So you want to wait three months? You want to wait five months? You want to do what we did last year and wait until April before we change anything about? You know what we're doing?
It's, it's good, you know, it sounds nice, it's good, it's good keywords that you're using, but we should make decisions on data that we have, that's real data, and not decisions that are just... Data-driven decisions and not, and not emotional decisions. This, I mean, there, there are potentially kids that would have been negatively impacted, their school days by this. We need to, we need to understand that, we need to make sure what we're seeing is right. You yourself pointed that out.
My, my issue with the second row, I don't think that addresses how many kids were, you know, how many siblings were positive. I'm comfortable that they got that row correct.
So you think they made a mistake on the second row, but every other row you think is correct?
I mean, what do you, I don't know. I don't know. But I don't think we're going to get, we're, we're never going to get perfect answers on this. You know, we're never going to get definitive answer, and we're just going to keep stalling every, every week, every two weeks.
Yeah, I don't think we, I, I, I just want to support what, what Steve is saying in terms of not making an emotional decision about it. And, you know, I'm also moved by the fact that our medical personnel in the district support this policy. And, you know, I think that we are not medical experts, for the most part, on this board. And, you know, we have to respect that and take it seriously. And, and that it has to be a factor, because I do think that one could expect that the, the medical director, the nurses, and the other medical personnel in the district would have access to more information. I don't think, I didn't understand, maybe, maybe I misheard that it's a minority of districts in, in the region that do not have this policy. I thought that of the nine that reported back, five do have this policy and four do not. Or maybe it's the reverse, so it's...
That's what I was... It was just a small sample that I took.
Right, a small sample, okay, so, anyway, so, yeah, that's where I stand on it.
I'm going to appeal to the opinions of medical professionals. I mean, if you take a look at the Westchester County Department of Health guidelines, there are many instances where they talk about policies for siblings. Yet they declined to have this policy in any of their guidelines. If you look at the state, you know, there's other, you know, they've considered the issue of siblings, they've considered symptoms asymptomatic. I think siblings appear several times in the Westchester County Department of Health guidelines. They didn't think it was necessary to include this policy in any of their guidelines or requirements, so why are we?
I could just ask, Norine, when you spoke to the districts, or how was the survey? Was it a written survey, or was it a verbal survey? And I'm curious...
It was a, a survey form, it was just as simple, do you exclude kids? I, I also asked what they were using as far as a PCR versus a rapid test, but that also changed, where so we don't have an option of... It used to be that it was really up to districts to decide whether to use a PCR or a rapid antigen. And so I did ask that question early on, but then that guidance changed. So we have, we have to take the PCR now, we can't accept the antigen, so that changed as well. So the only, the, the question was simply, did they exclude students? The siblings of when a household member was being tested for COVID?
No, I was just curious if there was any more specific comments from the five districts that were not, did not deploy this type of...
No, just that, that they don't, that's not their practice. As long as the, the students were asymptomatic, the siblings were asymptomatic, that they could come to school. That's, you know, that's the...
Absolutely, yeah.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, because these guidelines change so often, it's hard to keep up. So now it is not a doctor's note and not a rapid test, it has to be a negative PCR test or an alternate diagnosis such as like strep. Is that correct?
An alternate diagnosis or a pre-existing medical condition. That way, where there's no change in symptoms.
Okay, so like allergies?
Yeah, yeah. Allergies or, you know, something where, you know, there's no change in symptoms? Like symptoms consistent with that medical diagnosis? That previous medical condition?
Okay. So just to piggyback on that one. When it relates to allergies, since we're kind of in the season now, and we'll probably come into the season again. So if a child does have allergies, they have a sibling who doesn't feel well, has symptoms, they get COVID tested, the other sibling gets COVID tested, is negative. So it's either COVID, a negative COVID test, a COVID test? Or they have to go to their doctor and have the doctor's note indicate that they're, they have allergies or the case may be? Is that what?
I think that the nurses will look at that on a case-by-case basis. And if there's a pre-existing condition that's documented in the health office, I don't know that they necessarily need a, another note from the doctor. As long as it's, you know, they, they may have a conversation with the parents and, you know, is this consistent with, you know, what has been happening, you know, last week or last spring or, you know, and, you know, so it's a conversation and a, you know, clinical judgment, you know, at that point.
Of the nurses?
Yeah, but there would need to be documentation in the health office of that pre-existing condition? And, you know, honestly, a lot of this is beyond my scope. You know, I trust their professional, you know, opinions and, and judgment. And when they have questions, they do have access to our medical director to get feedback as well.
Steve? Amongst the medical professionals in the district, what's the split between the policies? Do, you know, is it like half support one and half to support the other? Or what does that split look like?
Medical directors in other districts?
No, I, I, in our district, our medical professionals, doctors, nurses. What's the split within our district of our medical professionals?
I think most of the, most of the medical professionals support the practice of excluding students, from my view. That's, that's my understanding of what they...
Sorry, I just want to...
Communicated to me.
Sorry, Norine, I just have two questions. So I think with the documented allergies, there just seems to be a lot of confusion around that one, because I know that there's been a lot of community members that have spoken specifically about, at the building level with Waverly, that children with documented allergies are constantly being sent home. So I think, I don't know how that's being handled, but if they do have documented allergies and they are having like a one-on-one conversation with the parents and saying, is this typical? And the parents say it is typical, but they're still being sent home for testing?
That's not my understanding. I mean, maybe there's a miscommunication, or the parents are upset that the child is being sent home. But my understanding from the nurses is that they look at that situation and, you know, they do, they do a clinical exam. And, you know, if there are symptoms that are not consistent with the pre-existing condition, sometimes there are, sometimes they're worsening symptoms. So again, it's really, you know, it's really the judgment of the nurse at the building. But my understanding is if it is consistent, there's been a lot of times that they have, you know, it has been consistent, and a student would stay in school.
So if parents have any different experiences with that, to whom should they direct their concerns?
Yeah, they should go to the building principal and speak with the building principal.
Okay, for sure. And just a question about like the missing one days versus two days. Would it ever be one day? Because if a child is sent home on a Monday, and they're able to get tested sometime that day, the test won't come back in time for Tuesday school?
There is, there is a rapid PCR test that's being...
Yeah, in, in Bri, I think.
In Quaker Ridge, I think.
Oh, Quaker Ridge, okay.
Quaker Ridge, a lot of the parents are going there for the rapid PCR. So there, there is the possibility of one day?
There are 17 different rapid... There's 17 different rapid PCI tests, which were just sent to us by Dr. Wong last week, that we distributed to the nurses. So the Westchester Department of Health is expanding the companies who manufacture rapid PCRs, because they are only requiring rapid PCRs, so that's going to change from last year.
Would that, would that information be able to go out to the community? Just so that's...
Yeah, yeah, I think what would be really helpful is, is who has these machines, right? So where can you take your kid to get all of these options that are now approved?
Because I mean, I know there's some, you know, I guess anxiety over how long is the wait going to be? Am I going to take my child there? I don't know, do I have to make an appointment? And then I think it would just be good for the community to have that information.
Yeah, I think we can have our nurse coordinate or put that information on the website, so parents have access, you know, to what we know. And that would be fine. Thank you.
So I think, you know, it, it seems like we don't have enough people here tonight to overturn the sibling policy. I'm assuming, you know, Steve says he wants to wait for more data. Cheryl, I'm assuming you don't want to overturn the policy, do you? I'm assuming you don't want to overturn the policy right now. We won't be able to pass that. Would any of you agree to a modification of the policy until we can get more data that says the unsymptomatic symptom can return to school with a rapid antigen test that can be performed at home? I know that test is not acceptable for a symptomatic student, but because the sibling policy isn't required by any sort of regulations, you could say, the kid with the runny nose goes, gets his PCR, a sibling, and takes a rapid antigen test at home and returns to school. Would any of you be willing to agree to that until we get more data?
It's funny, you, you, I was thinking that in my head, but I couldn't, I couldn't verbalize it with the, with the guidelines, but I, that was something I was thinking of, is how can we, how can we bridge, how can we bridge this a bit? I mean, in the spirit of, you know, keeping children in school, granted, keeping them in school with safety, and trying to, you know, be sensitive to parents, you know, working parents and the like. and trying to, you know, be sensitive to parents, you know, working parents and the like. I, I'm leaning toward that suggestion, actually.
So when you initially brought it up, I noticed Dr. Collins shaking her head. So I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit. If you could address, if you have concerns specifically about that, what that is.
I think it's kind of unfair to ask parents to go buy a test, which are hard to find, which are flying off the shelves, with these home antigen tests. We don't have as much regulation on home antigen tests. To ask them to have an invasive test on their kid.
It's an option.
It is an option, and I agree. And I'm hoping that as we get more and more rapid PCRs, that we will know within an hour or two for the kids that are symptomatic and everyone's back in school.
So you'd all like your parents the option to get rapid antigen tested CVS and send the sibling back to school?
So, you know, we were talking about data and guidelines, right? There's a reason why Westchester Department of Health doesn't recognize the antigen test because there are so many false negatives that it's not a reliable test. So why? Okay, so it's going to be, you know, as, as we try and make these decisions with data, right? Our goal is for the most amount of kids to be in school the most amount of days. That's what I go, we're all in the same page with that, that's what it is. And so if we can get the most accurate test and keep the smallest number of kids out of school, it benefits the whole classroom. We know the weather's getting bad, on rainy days, we're compromising our distance between kids when they're unmasked. So if we say, we know that someone in your household, who's in your bedroom, who's in the next bedroom, next door, is sick and potentially has COVID, and we're going to bring your brother into school to sit unmasked next to your kid, you know, like how does that feel, right? We first do no hands, that's my oath, that's what I bring. And so when we talk about symptomatic kids who we have to rule out, this is why, you know, the medical professionals that I'm friends with in the community support this. This is why the majority of medical directors that I speak to in Westchester support this, because we're trying to minimize the amount of kids in the house.
But aren't you still going to be specific about the possibility of bringing a sibling back with an antigen test? So we're talking about an unsymptomatic kid who has a sibling that hasn't been diagnosed with anything. And there's no rule or regulation, and you could say, even though the antigen test isn't perfect, isn't it better to just say, well, it's close enough, you can bring the kid back?
Yeah.
We're not talking about a symptomatic, again, we're not talking about a symptomatic kid.
So we know that folks are most contagious forty-eight hours before the onset of symptoms. So it's not that you are asymptomatic and not contagious, and then become contagious once you have symptoms. You are most contagious forty-eight hours before you get sick. So when, so potentially, these are very contagious, the peak of contagiousness happens before the symptoms that we are keeping in school. I'm happy to provide all the data and articles on that. So we've talked about other happy mediums. We've talked to the company that we've done this a lot of testing. We had a helpful meeting with them a few weeks ago to say, how can we make this easier for parents? How can we think about, you know, more surveillance tests and expanding surveillance tests and getting requests from the Department of Health? The goal is not to, we're still on the same page with keeping the most amount of kids here.
So Steve, Cheryl, none of you would be willing to bring back an asymptomatic sibling with a negative rapid antigen test?
Why are you not asking?
Or anybody else, does anybody else?
But I have a question. I thought that to the president, Vice President is sitting in and presiding. I thought that we had decided as a board that we weren't going to bring issues to a vote on the floor of a meeting, so, you know, that we were going to give prior, prior notice so that all the board members would have full opportunity to do their own research and come informed to the meeting. So I feel like Jonah's calling for a vote, but I thought that we as a board had agreed not to, not to do that.
Well, I think we all had noticed this was on the agenda and I brought it up at the last meeting, so it's not like it's springing on anybody.
There's nothing on the agenda that we were going to vote on this tonight.
I'm not sure there's even a resolution.
So I'm not asking for a resolution or a vote, I'm just saying if the majority of us support it, then the administration can vote without a resolution.
Is the, is the question to support using a test that we were just told is not accurate?
It's not perfectly accurate. They are, every test has a certain margin of error. And what is the margin of error of antigen test? I thought it was, what, a seven percent accurate, something like that? Seventy. For an unsymptomatic sibling that hasn't, you know, been exposed to any confirmed case, and then they take a test that's seventy percent effective, you don't think that's enough?
So I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to take a better executive privilege here. I'm going to make a vote. And I know you'll say I'm kicking the can down the road. I don't think I'm kicking the can down the road, but I still believe that we have two and a half weeks of data. We have, you know, we have a sibling representation population that's affected. It's about one percent below or one and a half percent of our sibling population that missed the data to the school because of this. We have a responsibility to thirty-two hundred plus kids in the district. I think if we wait one more meeting to get some better data and see if we see something better in the data, we may be in a better position than maybe PCR tests that are available, PCR tests that are widely available. The whole picture changes in a couple of weeks. I, I don't think I'm comfortable making a change to a, or asking the administration to make a change to a policy now based on, based on data that seems to me to be incomplete, based on anecdotal conversations about, you know, seventy percent effectiveness of this rapid test, you know, that deals with case, case issues that, you know, I mean, it's not, it's all theory and it's all, and I get that. But I think, I think today, I'm not ready to change my position on that. And I'm not ready to advocate to, 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 to do that. So, you know, I don't know if, if there are others that are, you know, if there are whatever, five voices that say we should be advocating for it, I, you know, that's fine, I'd be overruled. But at this point, I don't think we have that. And I don't think, you know, we spent half hour on this already tonight. And I hear where you're coming from, and I don't disagree in principle with a lot of what you're saying in terms of we want to get the siblings back if we can. But I think right now, we're looking at a metric that's just such a small percentage of our population with data that's such a small representation of the population, that may not even be statistically significant. I don't think, I don't think it makes sense to try and push in the general, you know, different resolution.
So at the next meeting, do you think we'll have enough data then?
I think it's plausible. I give the whole again, there may be rapid PCR tests. It may eliminate, may eliminate the need for, for that conversation altogether. Because why do we have to approve a CBS test when someone can get a two-hour PCR test or whatever it is, right, and be back in school the next day?
Because then a student would not have to make a point of the doctor.
How different is a student making a point with the doctor than going to CVS and finding?
If it's done before school, they wouldn't miss another day of school.
I'm just, I'm just not convinced that we have information yet. Just, look, we, we see that if it came back and there was no positives on siblings, I might have said, okay, we're seeing there's no siblings that are coming back positive, then I'd say you have a case. But again, the two siblings that came back positive could have caused eleven more students or six more students, or whatever the number is, to still miss days. So what's, you know, what are we, what are we doing?
Well, I hope that, you know, next meeting, when we take this can down the road again, we won't, you know, say that we need more evidence or we need more data to make a decision.
That's true, too. Does anybody disagree with what I'm saying besides Jonah? I want to have your opinions, have more hesitation with that, Cheryl.
No, I just wanted to comment that I think it's definitely worth discussing because if five districts around us are not excluding siblings and there are no guidelines about siblings for the Department of Health, that I don't think that it is, you know, not a viable option to be considering this. So maybe with two more weeks of data, we'll have some clarity on that. But I, I think that it's worth keeping this as part of the discussion.
And, and I'm certainly not advocating that we wait till the next session again. I'm advocating that we talk about this and we see, and we continue tracking it. But I just, I'm just, you know, with the numbers we have, they just don't seem statistically significant to, to be, to build a case that, that makes, makes me feel like I should be supporting, I should be assuring. If we get there, I certainly can change it.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I agree, I think this is important to discuss. And Jonah, you and I might disagree at the moment on this, but we might agree next week or, or next meeting, or the meeting after that, you know, hey. I, I want to see the data, and I think it's important that we discuss this. And I'm glad we're discussing it and bringing it up. Because we, we want to make the decision that's best for the students, all of the students and each student within the district.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for, you know, taking a look at the data and for the honest discussion. You know, really, this is an uncertain decision, doesn't necessarily require a vote. But in the end, my charge is to, you know, get input and understand all the layers to these tough decisions, right? And so you're going to have almost twice as much data in two weeks. And, you know, right now, if you look at the data and, and what we know, you know, it's, you know, it's, it's pretty favorable for, you're not seeing a lot, a lot of cases, right? You're making a change doesn't seem, based on this smaller sample size, to be something that you would never do. With that said, you know, it's very short cycle. So if we get, if we double that cycle roughly, might be more comfortable, knowing what works for the community, you know. I think everybody here has echoed what I thought in my own mind, all sides to this, you know, so it's, it's good to know. And will give me an opportunity, maybe in a couple of weeks, to see if we want to make a change. You know, I've thought about this, you could either make a change. It's really about how risk diverse or how, you know, you want to be. If you made a change now based on the data, you can always change back, which might, you know, if you stay the course couple more weeks, you might be more sure about the change and you won't be going back and forth. I don't think there's necessarily a wrong answer here. I do think, I do appreciate the dialogue and maybe we'll all feel a little bit more confident in a couple of weeks. That, that would help me, because I do feel like you shouldn't come to vote. This is a decision that the administration ought to be able to make. But I don't want to make a vote because it's, I'm one person, and I'm a medical professional and I need all of your help to really understand all sides of this and community preference. So thank you.
I realize it's not what you want, but hopefully it's fair, reasonable, we can, we can get it again. And I'll ask that the administration to collect the data and verify those. And if you can also possibly try and capture the number of days in addition to that. I know it's a lot of extra work and I apologize, we're not yet. But I think if we can get that data, that may help us, you know, for any wanted to get a more answer. Is that fair?
I should talk with the nurses about that to see, you know, what we can do. I don't know about going back, so I don't know if we'd be able to get that back data. But I guess we could probably check attendance and figure it out. You know, a lot of this just takes a lot of time, which is, I understand and I get it, it's just.
I mean, you understand that you have your actual job to do besides.
No, not, not for me, so I'm not talking about me, I'm talking about the nurses. Like they, you know, we're working together. On this, it's taking a lot of time to go back and get data, you know, I get it. You know, we'll do it if you want it, you know, if you want it, we'll get it. But, you know, there's been a lot in the building. And whatever we do is taking away from what they're doing in the buildings, which is fine, I'm happy to do it. I'm just putting that out there.
Yeah, I mean, it takes away from direct service, we just want to be careful, direct service to kids. Which is, our nurses are stretched very, very thin right now, because it's not, these are not normal times. So, you know, let's make sure any enhancements we're asking for to this data, there's a good value proposition there. I would say that continuing to collect as we have been allows us to answer the questions, making sure the data where there are anomalies is looked at and see if there's anything we guess is worth doing. But, you know, and going forward, trying to understand the number of days, if we can capture that, that shouldn't be too hard. But when you start, go much beyond that, you're, you're going to start taking time from kids and the ability of the nurses to do a good job. So let's, let's, my plea is, there's enough here to help inform the decision, let's not get too complicated.
All right, let's, I don't think there's anything else, let's move on to the next item. And that is a discussion of opting out of Canada's open law. And this was put on the agenda by a board member who is not with us today, and now he will join us. But I guess the request was just to be aware that the town, Westchester, has the ability to opt out of the Canada's law, and they have. So other surrounding towns have, so other surrounding towns have not. There are, I guess, questions or concerns as to how that impacts school or if it impacts the school, or if the school has any ability to have a position on this. And was asked to discuss that and bring that up. I don't know, you have anything for us on that?
This was, as you said, Rob, by a board president who made us aware of it. He asked that it be put on. I know very little about, about it. I was thinking that it was an item of special interest that he would be able to talk more about it in the absence of that, might be okay to table it, would be a suggestion. Unless others at the table know more and want to discuss it?
I think it's a good idea for us to not, to, to understand this better. At least I don't, I don't quite frankly get it, but.
I know there was a presentation actually by Kate and Bean a while back on this law for municipalities. I don't think the school board actually has the ability to have any say in one way or the other. But we certainly want to understand how the school, I mean, how the school or the students are prepared by any logic and system. I will leave it at that and maybe the president will talk more about it when he's here. Okay, well, last meeting, we had the opportunity to change our format to consent agenda. So we've been chatting for a bit. The rest of our agenda will probably go quickly. And I'll ask, Steve, do you mind moving on consent agenda?
Sure. Be a result that the Board of Education approved the consent agenda, which includes nine approval minutes, nine point one. There's nothing after nine point one. Ten personnel agenda, ten point one. Eleven committee on preschool special education, special education recommendations, business office recommendations, and other business agendas as listed.
I'm going to actually ask that we amend that to rules of amendment two, because amendment two is a personal agenda and not listed. And I, Chrissy, will you second the motion with the men? Any discussion, anybody wanted to take anything off the agenda? Anybody have anything they want to discuss about the consent agenda? Then I would ask for a vote in favor. It's unanimous, very good. Thank you. And jump right down then to number fourteen. Our next meeting date is October twelfth, the work session, and October twenty-sixth, November ninth. And feel free to browse the board docs if you want to see any additional meeting dates beyond that.
Mr. Vice President, can I just talk for something about the future meeting dates? So just to let everybody know, I have to apologize, this meeting was supposed to be at seven thirty tonight. That is the new meeting time I think we're going to in our board meetings. So I just want to let everybody know that there was a miscommunication on my part that didn't enable that to go out on the agenda at seven thirty. So we kept that date, it's fine. But then the meetings will be moving into the library, starting with our next meeting instead of being here.
I think Cheryl brought up the email concern about the, a lot of times, the committee meetings.
Correct, we will have to make some adjustments for those perhaps. And maybe perhaps on those nights, we may keep the board meetings at eight if you want to. But my understanding was is that there was, there was consensus to move to seven thirty. But, you know, if you want to keep it at eight, we can, I don't know. I thought it was seven thirty going forward, but if there needs to be more discussion, then let's keep it at eight until you can give me a more firm.
Do you want to discuss it now or just go to the meeting? Have people had a consensus for seven thirty? Are people concerned about committee meetings starting at six thirty? And if Cheryl, you expressed some concerns about that? I don't think it's unreasonable, some people may be like, six thirty?
Yeah, I, I, depending, depending on the day, it might be an issue. But I think we could potentially, I mean, that's if we want to continue having committee meetings prior to meeting. I know there was a lot of, there's benefit to that. I know there was a lot of, there's benefits to that, especially for staff members that have to attend those meetings, so, I don't know. But my thought would be that we not alternate meeting start times based on that, that they're consistent, so that the public doesn't have to figure out, is today a seven thirty meeting or is it maybe a one o'clock meeting? So, I would ask that we be insistent if possible.
Crazy question, seven forty-five, seven forty-five start times, no, or does it have to be seven?
You know, I agree with Steve, we don't want to alternate the meetings. I think, you know, we haven't really had a discussion about this with the board. The seven thirty start time of the meeting is fine, I think that we have to acknowledge that it will impact committee meetings, not maybe every time, but we have to, you know, honor that, acknowledge it and honor it if a board member wants to be able to attend an important committee meeting, these are board committees, for board members that some of us might commute from the city, it's very difficult to get to a meeting that starts at six thirty, and even, you know, so sometimes even seven is a crunch, but, so I just think we need to, you know, be willing to honor that and to acknowledge that we might have to have meetings more often, not not every time, but on occasion, on days that are not, you know, medium, like prior to board meetings, that could happen, right? And I think that if you have two board members on an important committee, like finance or labor, and one can't get there on time, I think that that's a significant issue, that we can't be holding meetings if board members can't arrive on time for homework, that's...
And if there's something you want to discuss in the next work session, you can do that, I mean...
So, let's keep it at eight for now, and have a discussion in the next work session, in terms of, we're going to keep the floor with those who are just streaming, we're going to move to the library via center, but we'll leave it at eight until we have a chance to asbestos it by email or the next work session, to see if we're going to actually need to find that, I think that that's a good starting point. Any sense? All right, comments from the Board of Education? Anybody have anything else to add?
I just wanted to take a minute to acknowledge the live open houses. I had the pleasure of attending two of the three elementary school open houses, Greenville and Weaverly, having children in both of those schools. I heard equally fantastic feedback from the parents who attended the Anne Hutch open house. As a parent, it was wonderful to be in there, in the classrooms, meeting the teachers, just having that excitement of the, you know, back to school feeling, and I just want to thank everyone that made that happen, the building principals, the staff, the teachers, it was, you know, a really great experience. So, I'm glad we were one of the few or only schools in the region to be able to do that. We all appreciate that.
Just to agree. Any other comments from board? Okay, comments from the public? And I'll remind everyone, there's a three-minute timer, and we're going to set the time limit for the thirty-minute with an option to extend, for thirty minutes from now, so it's now four to ten, we'll end the public comment period at ten fifteen, unless there's a vote to extend. Okay.
Suzanne Johnson, fourteen, is this one?
Matt, can you bring it up a little bit, please? Apologize, love us all, love.
Suzanne Johnson, fourteen, Industry Place. I am here with some of our community members to follow up on questions concerning the diversity, equity, and inclusion program. Many in the community question the lack of transparency of the reported DEI program, which is vague and contradictory. Many in the community consider this a parental rights issue. Right now, a growing number of parents are questioning why the Board of Education is not joining us in the fight to protect our children from a program that has nothing to do with improving performance or excellence in academics. It appears that the classroom is now an instrument to install a radical ideology that may or may not be a positive influence. We understand there is excessive pressure to conform and implement DEI. According to the district website, the DEI task force is comprised of twenty-eight members, three who are board members and the superintendent. Why then, after three DEI meetings, we still do not know what is the extent the DEI program will go? While we can see the agenda for the first two meetings, the third meeting held on September twenty-second is still not posted. We want an explanation of the following. One, what DEI changes are happening right now in each of our Eastchester schools? Two, how will the DEI framework be implemented over time? There are several contradictory and confusing statements on the district website concerning DEI. It says DEI is not a curriculum. However, the culturally responsive, sustainable education includes an inclusive curriculum and assessment. If DEI is based on CRSE, then how is it not part of a curriculum? Also, it says there are no DEI materials or methods. However, for the first time this school year, teachers are being told to place posters and flags in classrooms that were not previously there. Children are being asked to present their pronouns and describe their identities. Parents are noticing sexually explicit books listed in the elementary digital library called Sora. Many of these are instruments to groom children to be more sexually aware at young ages. The district site also says DEI and the critical race theory are not the same thing. However, as mentioned in the DEI slideshow, they have overlapping concepts. We would like to know what overlapping concepts are being implemented. Parents are very concerned, we are concerned because we don't know what's happening in the classroom, we know this program has been many years in the making, but we need the support of this board to help navigate the critical junction we're at. It is imperative that the Board of Education addresses this issue immediately with the community. I hope you spend as much time on this as you have discussing COVID tonight. Thank you.
Chris Johnson, fourteen, Industry. Two quick points to the board. First thing I want to request from the board, that you get community input on the recommendations that you receive from the DEI committee well in advance to deciding, i.e., not just before voting at a specific meeting. So, I request that you put word out to the community to actually give feedback on their actual recommendations, well in advance before deciding, so that's number one. Number two, I have news for everyone here, COVID is never going to go away. I was a little curious today, so I went to the CDC website, and I looked up the death rate of COVID, and it was actually pretty interesting. So, from January twenty twenty till this month, so over a year and a half, for eighteen and under, there are seventy-three million kids in this country. COVID deaths, according to the CDC website, four hundred and sixty-four out of seventy-three million, look it up. If we're going to worry about positive cases, we're going to chase our tail to the end of time. It's really about the death rate, not the positive cases, because you'll never stop it. There are more important issues to worry about, more serious issues, like teen suicide, alcoholism, drunk driving. I think we've given it enough time, there's other important issues to discuss, thank you.
Hello, my name is Sophia McGann, and I live at one eighty toward Dante Avenue. I first wanted to thank the school board for the opportunity to speak today. You first heard us speak about the need for the diversity, equity, and inclusion program at the board meeting on August thirty-first. Since then, we have formed a group of young advocates who have increasingly become involved in our community. I want to officially introduce our group, because you will evidently be seeing more of us. We are tomorrow's leaders, an out-of-school group geared to advocate on the behalf of student body for changes we want to see through facilitating constructive discussions between teachers, administrators, and school board members. Tonight, we are calling for an amendment to be made to the high school dress code. I wish I could say that the dress code rarely affects our students, but over my six years living in Eastchester, the discontent over the restrictions continues to get louder. But I need to modify my previous sentence, because it's never really the students that are being affected, it is continually the female students that are disrupted from their learning. As of today, the twenty-twenty-one Eastchester High School handbook states that an individual's appearance does have a bearing on how he or she behaves, and how others respond to him or her. And three bullet points later prohibit students from wearing midriff tops, halter tops, tube tops, plunging necklines, and spaghetti straps, as well as shorts and skirts that are shorter than mid thigh length. Beginning with the introductory statement, a student is reminded that their appearance will affect how others treat them, that if an outfit elicits a negative reaction, that student's attire is to blame. This makes perfect sense when an item of clothing displays hateful messages or illicit imagery, but in what way does my stomach, shoulders, or thighs elicit such a reaction? And why do I become the person to blame? Whether intentional or not, a T-shirt displaying drugs or violence is thus perceived as equally inappropriate and offensive as a crop top under the current school dress code. But as we look deeper, the words midriff, tube top, and spaghetti straps are inherently gendered. It is no coincidence that fifty percent of the student body is significantly more likely to wear these items than, and that that fifty percent is being reminded of this discrepancy every day. Every time a female student is publicly called on and taken out of class to change, she is disrupted. Yet the dress code is all in the effort to supposedly prevent the disruption of learning. It is clear that the Eastchester School District's goal for their students' future is looking at ways to promote equity. Here is your chance, there is no reason why young women should have to endure embarrassment from the time they are twelve, because the clothes they feel comfortable in are deemed inappropriate at school. That is not equity, especially while young boys must actively work to get dress coded. But you can stop this, you can remove any and all restrictions that are targeting our girls. We have provided packets for each of you that will be given at the end of the meeting and show clearly why it must be removed. You asked for our opinion, and here it is, we strongly urge you to take advantage of it. Thank you.
You also went over, so I'm not going to stop the second term to three, but I'm going to ask people to ramp up. I'm also going to ask, when you were speaking, no one interrupted you, no one made noises in the conference.
You're going to make rules stick by over three minutes?
You went over, and I didn't stop you, I'm not going to stop exactly if you're done, I'm going to ask people to ramp up.
She did not speak. I don't even know what you're talking about.
She did not speak, so keep it down. First thing, where's the six straight distance, you got a bunch of people, you said, you got, where was it?
All right, we're going to have order here, and if you can't maintain order, you're welcome to leave the building.
You believe would be though.
I'll next speak.
My name is Madison Diaz, and I'm a senior at Eastchester High School. Last year, I was dress coded for the first time, two days in a row. I was caught wearing crop tops. I emphasized the word caught as I had worn the same types of clothing since ninth grade, and it had never been an issue before. As I walked into the building, I was asked to go to the office and followed there to ensure a speedy arrival. My school was so concerned about making sure my body got covered that moment, that my temperature was never taken. It saddened me and still does, that my school found it more important that my stomach was covered than ensuring my health in the middle of a pandemic. I was extremely upset and made quite the commotion to my friends, which is probably a part of why I got called out of seventh period the following day to get dress coded a second time. I was told in a very condescending way that if I was caught wearing one more crop top, I would be suspended. There is no way I'm getting into Northwestern with a suspension on my transcript, so now I wake up twenty minutes earlier every morning to try on different tops and bottoms, making sure I'm fully covered. I tried to convince myself that rules are rules, and that the school was just trying to look out for me. That was until a recent incident at the senior assembly, when the dress code was being discussed. We were told, no midriff showing, no low V-neck shirts, et cetera, and then I heard, modesty is the best policy, have respect for yourself. I was mortified, this is not what a school should be teaching young girls and boys, that a woman's self-respect is based on how much of her is or isn't covered? This is the type of statement. As I was saying, I was mortified, this is not what a school should be teaching young girls and boys, that a woman's self-respect is based on how much of her is or isn't covered? This is the type of statement that causes mental health issues, and young girls have enough difficulty when they see such ideals promoted on social media. It's the twenty-first century, and women are still being objectified. And while this inevitably continues to happen out in the real world, it should not be happening in a school setting. I wear crop tops because that's my fashion choice, I like the way they look on me, I wear them because I do have respect for myself, because I feel comfortable in my own body and in my surroundings. The last thing I expected was that my own school that promotes the protection of students would be the same place I felt uncomfortable. It is hard for me to wrap my head around the fact that my school is more strict about covering my midriff than ensuring people cover their noses and mouths properly with a mask. I hope my speech has given, I hope my speech has given you all a different perspective on our school's dress code, and possibly moved you to help us make a change. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Hello, my name is Collette Santo. As a student at Eastchester High School, my battle with the dress code began as a sixth grader. At age eleven, female students were being taught to cover up their bodies to prevent distracting others around them. To this day, girls from grades six to twelve are still subjected to a dress code that targets them more than males. There's not a single item on the dress code that is clearly directed against males. All of the restricted items on the dress code are gender neutral, with the exception of six female targeted items. There are strong tones of inequality in the dress code, and it must be addressed. The purpose of the school dress code, as written in the student handbook, is meant to enforce a clean and appropriate appearance in the school setting. The Oxford dictionary defines the word appropriate as suitable, acceptable, or correct for the particular circumstances. The circumstance is whether or not to accept tube tops, midriff tops, halter tops, plunging necklines, and spaghetti strap tops as appropriate under a school setting. Since appropriate is ruled on a basis of circumstance, the dress code is not inherently set in stone and is subject to changing. A reason the dress code, a reason to change the dress code is that, simply put, it is sexist. A reason to change the dress code is that, simply put, it is sexist. As seen by the multiple female targeted items, the dress code teaches girls that they are responsible to cover themselves up for others. In the midst of my educational experience, I believe that my education is more important than whether or not my shoulders are showing. Additionally, the school is operating under a society that is different than it was thirty years ago, when the dress code was first enforced. The clothing style of today is simply the product of a changing society. I, a female student in 2021, dressed the way I do, not to be rebellious, but because I'm a product of my environment. Clothing brands of today predominantly market tube tops, midriff tops, halter tops, plunging necklines, and spaghetti strap tops. The clothing style is a norm for most teens today and can be appropriate for school if staff chooses to accept and de-stigmatize these apparel. I believe we can loosen the dress code and create a mindset that is less targeting towards women and more focused on education. We can change the view of what is appropriate for school on the basis of the circumstances that society produces. I believe that the school needs to take a more progressive approach on the dress code. It is biased and against girls and needs to be reformed. Lastly, I want to announce that we're already one step closer than you'd think. The school already funds uniforms that break their own dress code. The volleyball team wore spandex shorts that are shorter than mid-length. The girls' tennis and lacrosse teams wore skirts that are shorter than mid-thigh length. Lastly, the cross-country team is provided with shorts that are also shorter than mid-thigh length for their uniform. At three p.m., the cross-country team can wear shorts as a part of their uniform, but from the time of eight a.m. to two-thirty, they are not allowed to wear those same shorts in school. If the school can fund apparel that goes against their very own dress code, then they need to allow students to be able to wear the same in school.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, my name's Inez. I'm a senior, and I would like to share my experiences and thoughts about the dress code. A dress code is something meant to maintain a professional environment and send a message of discipline and respect. However, I believe that it is doing the exact opposite. First off, if students are able to wear pajama pants, hoodies, and casual clothing, it is clear that professionalism is not a valid concern. Further, the dress code and the way it is enforced actively disrespect and target young girls, through sexualizing them and making them miss valuable class time for the interest of their peers. The dress code perpetuates an environment where controlling girls is normalized. We are all raised with this mindset, but it is also our job to get out of it. As girls, we are constantly forced to over-sexualize ourselves, whether it is our parents telling us to change it to something more appropriate when we have guests over, or always told that we should cover up because we're creating a distraction, and the dress code stimulates that. I have been dress coded a few times, and luckily I always had a jacket with me, so I never had to actually go home. But I know many girls who did, and I think having to go down to the office, then all the way home to change, then back to school is a lot more distracting than simply seeing someone's skin. While others may argue this is an overreaction, I truly believe that getting dress coded is dehumanizing. The act of shaming young girls, usually in front of their peers, and then having a conversation with them about how their outfit is cause for such a change in the course of their day, is humiliating and disappointing. As someone who has been dress coded a few times, this backward mindset stays with you even outside of school. Even when I'm hanging out with my friends or when I'm home alone, I tend to pull down my shorts or my shirt and do any effort to cover up, since it is second nature to be vigilant and cautious at this point. I'm still trying to get out of this toxic mindset myself, but it is difficult when it is enforced and supported in school. I say this because school is more than just a place to learn. It is a social environment that sets you up for the real world. So if we can't be comfortable in a place where we're supposed to learn and interact and be the most comfortable, where would we be?
Hello. My name is Kushku. I'm a senior. I'm speaking on behalf of Dennis Danaher. He couldn't be here today. While there are many flaws that can be zeroed in on in the school district, both major and minor, one stands out from the rest, the school's current dress code. The dress code has been an issue, not just in Eastchester, but nationwide. In fact, several days ago, The Kansas Report published an article discussing this topic, where students expressed their dissatisfaction with feeling singled out due to this dress code. Students have been protesting for good reason against these rules, which can be perfectly described as sexist. In an article published by The New York Times several weeks ago, a study was done that proved the theory that the dress code was targeting female clothing and was more lenient towards what males were allowed to wear. Within the same New York Times article, a 2020 study conducted by Todd A. De Mitchell added on to this theory by stating that these dress codes, despite what they seem, focus primarily on the perceived sexualization of children. Some schools have stated that certain clothing items, such as tank tops and strampless shirts, were prohibited because they were deemed, and I quote, "too sexy." For those who do not know, the National Women's Law Center is a nonprofit organization that focuses on garnering and protecting women's rights as well as fighting for gender equality. You may ask, why bring this up? Sabrina Bernadell is an official fellow at the NWL-C and spoke on the school's dress code's discriminatory practices. Dress codes are definitely sexist, she said. They put onus on the girls to not be distracting or not call attention to themselves, instead of putting onus on all the students to respect everyone's body. She added on by stating that the dress codes, which target black women more than anyone else, makes them ashamed of how they express themselves and also with what they look like. Our own Code of Conduct states spaghetti straps are prohibited articles of clothing. However, articles of clothing such as tank tops, which are often worn by Ben, are not stated within the guidelines. This begs the question, why is this allowed, and spaghetti straps, which are almost identical with the exception of a strap length, are allowed? This very much supports the idea that the dress code is, in fact, sexist and specifically targets women. To go further into this, I've seen and known male students who have worn tank tops, and they have never been given any warning or detention, but a handful of female students who have worn similar articles of clothing have been dress coded before the day even started. When will there be change? Thank you.
Lori De La Para, twenty-eight Claudette Way. I'd like to say it's nice to see so many people at these meetings, and instead of focusing on what we disagree on, I think we can all admit that we want the best for all the students in our district, and let's focus on that common goal. Unlike the earlier speaker, the DEI task force is not a mystery. It was put together to guide our district through a framework put forth by the New York State Education Department. For those who are speaking out against culturally responsive, sustainable education, I have just one question. Have you even read the framework? Are you against creating a more accepting environment, which is choosing kind words over put-down language, striving to accept others, supporting and accepting classmates, and holding peers accountable? Acknowledging and trying to incorporate the ideas of peers respectfully, recognizing that other students may have vastly different perspectives, experiences, strengths, needs, and opinions? This seems like a benefit to all students. The framework also includes having high expectations and rigorous instruction. Isn't that what we heard over and over during the Board of Education? We want all students to be able to learn and succeed with a high level of excellence as the goal. The framework serves to identify inclusive curriculum and assessments. This includes featuring resources and materials that are written, developed by voices that offer diverse perspectives. What is the problem with having a wider and more global view? For our educators, it means engaging in ongoing professional learning and support, where instructors use professional learning activities as opportunities to better acquaint themselves with the diverse communities in which our students live. If anybody has seen the census results, you can see that diversity is growing in Westchester County. We have heard commentary that parents should be teaching this at home, and we absolutely should. Here's what it means for parents. Be aware of what your children are learning. Ask questions about their self, community, and society that may serve as opportunities connect with in-school learning. Collaborate with teachers to connect events that are relevant to the community to the classroom. This framework is set forth by the state. What we do with it is the mission of our district's DEI task force. They have barely started, and their goals have not even been published. So why are community members shooting it down before they even hear what it is about? At the very least, keep an open mind until the task force presents its plan. Let's give our students the awareness and the tools to thrive in an interconnected world and global economy. Ask yourself, are you against acceptance, a rigorous curriculum, a high level of excellence, and ongoing support? Because this is what is in store for our students if you allow the task force to do its job. Thank you.
I live at Ninety Park Drive. I was going to address the DEI issue, but Lori just said everything that anybody could say about its importance. So thank you, Lori. But I have to say, once again, tonight, the kids have stole the show. I can't tell you how it resonates with me, and sadly, that it took tonight for me to remember it. Young girls are so aware of their body at a very, very young age, and it's not positive. From very young ages, kids that are those ages or younger often have a really disproportionate idea of their body. They are slammed with media of what they're supposed to look like, how skinny they're to be, how tall, how big their breasts should be, et cetera. And you know, the damage that that does to girls is why girls are bulimic. It's why they're anorexic. It's why women like me, for many years of my life, have been obsessive-compulsive about my body. And I can't tell you how many women I know who I share that with. Okay? And that's not what it should be. And these kids are absolutely right. When girls are called out because they're showing maybe a little bit of their tummy or their shoulders, what is that saying? Is that saying we're back in the day where men can't control themselves, that boys can't control themselves? That's ridiculous. And this is something that's really important. This isn't just like, oh, let's blow this off, you know, these kids will get over it. For young girls, this is so much about who they are and how they're going to live the rest of their lives, and their sense of who they are and what their body is. Too many times, we don't feel safe. Young girls don't feel safe, because that's what we're training them. We're training them that their body is going to engender a response that is not safe. And what they're saying is, we want to be able to be who we are, and we expect you, as educators, to stand up and say, you know what? This is wrong, because it's really wrong. And I don't know unless my daughter has not told me that she's ever been dress coded. I will ask her after this. But I can tell you, I wouldn't take it lightly as a mom. Girls deserve better than this, and it's about time we started supporting them and supporting them looking at their selves in a healthy way. I don't want my daughter or any of those kids to live some with what I've lived with for my entire life. And I'm being honest and right out there and saying, I don't want her to get on the scale ten times a day. I don't know if I don't get on it ten times, but I don't want that for them. Do you want that for them? Let's have a real conversation about this. They're important. Our girls are important. Thank you.
It looks like we have no more speakers, which looks appropriately like an empty or non-entertaining meeting. So with that, I will entertain... I will entertain a motion to move to, exactly, to discuss a...
Contraction matter.
Contraction matter. So, a second? Thank you. And I'm over. Okay. Well, thanks everyone for joining us tonight, and we'll see you in a couple weeks. But thanks to all the speakers.